Completely busy from like six to maybe four AM until ten PM every night. Um, it was exhausting.
I don't know.
All of our media guys, because they're two K five one, used to be in the dark guys.
Yeah.
When that all comes down, is every other class going around and.
Right.
You can't get a.
I'm talking to you.
Student business.
Oh, there was, there was, no, it's no joke. There was one day that I, um, I was twenty five and seven.
And then this year I have a student in the.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm glad you were there.
I appreciate that I, that I had the opportunity to serve in that task.
I knew, I knew you would, because you have it early.
Really okay. Too hard on some of the kids.
No, they were amazing.
Mm.
So like, when things got stressed out.
Alrighty. We ready to go?
Yes, just remind you to tell you about Lincoln High School.
I'd like to call the, uh, regular business meeting of the Tacoma School Board, uh, for October twenty seventh, two thousand sixteen to order. You please raise for the flag salute run by Vice President Oshka, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With the general counsel, please call the roll.
President Viall.
Here.
Director Oshka.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Cobb.
Here.
Uh, Chair would move to excuse Director Heinz.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of excusing Director Heinz signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion carries for oh. Uh, item four, adoption of the agenda. President would entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Are there any questions by members of the board of staff? Um, items on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing no, no opposition, motion carries for oh. Recognition of staff, item five, recognition of staff, students and community. Five one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Tacoma Community House. Read to me. Um, Mary Lee, are you doing this presentation tonight? Thank you, Mary Lee Tambura.
Oh, shoot, no, I'll do it when I get home.
Good evening. I'm Mary Lee Tambura with the Community Partnership Office, and we are here to present a Gold Star to Tacoma, Tacoma Community House. So Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, other districts and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success, the whole child and their future, which in turn affects the quality of life for the entire Tacoma community. Today, we are here to recognize Tacoma Community House with over one hundred years of service. They have achieved many firsts in our community, hosting Tacoma's first baby clinic, the first organized kindergarten class, and to hiring the first African American teacher. They have many programs for new immigrants and refugees of nearly every ethnic group. A vital program they operate is Read to Me that serves Tacoma Public Schools students. Read to Me began in nineteen eighty-eight over twenty-eight years ago when Saint Joseph's Hospital organized volunteers to provide tutoring and mentoring to emerging readers at Macarver Elementary. It was first known as SMART, then Birlin, then Read to Me. In two thousand eleven, programming, the program was adopted by Tacoma Community House. The district has continued to support Read to Me with funding, space and staff at four schools, Macarver, Lister, Manitow and Arlington. As we all know, after third grade, students are no longer learning to read, they're reading to learn. So Read to Me matches trained volunteers with first, second and third grade emerging readers who have been identified by the partner school. Each student works one-on-one with their tutor once a week for forty-five minutes throughout the school year. The purpose is to reach benchmark reading goals by the end of the third grade. Each year, Read to Me recruits over one hundred and forty volunteers. That's a hundred and forty people that volunteer for the entire school year. They receive two hours of training that focus on building reading fluency skills. On-site Read to Me coordinators support students and tutors to ensure the program mirrors the curriculum of each child's classroom. This is Tacoma Community House's sixth year running Read to Me. In two thousand eleven, uh, Read to Me started with two schools and a hundred and forty-two students. By two thousand fifteen, they grew to four schools and tutored two hundred and twenty-two students. According to DRA assessment scores, ninety-eight percent of Read to Me students who started the program were below the basic reading level for their grade and two percent were at basic level. By May, however, over half of the students were at basic or above. According to STAR's data, seventy-three percent of the second and third grader Read to Me students began the year in urgent intervention and twenty-one percent were on intervention. By the end of the school year, sixty-two percent of these students were at or above benchmarks with only twenty-seven percent on urgent intervention or intervention. Nine out of ten students increased at least one reading level and seventy-four percent increased at least one grade level. This year, they have already recruited a hundred and thirty-nine tutors and have two more trainings scheduled in November. So if you know someone who might like to tutor a child, let them know. Um, I would like to introduce the following two people. Um, Carol Webster, who has been a, um, tutor with the program for six years. And Karen Thomas is going to say a little something. She, um, is with Tacoma Community House and she's their volunteer services manager.
Well, thank you all for having us here and for giving us this award. We've really enjoyed working with the Tacoma Public Schools over the last six years. It's been very exciting, very, oh, a little too exciting at times when we have all these students, all these tutors, and space is always an issue, but we are so thankful to the schools and to the principals in particular who make space for us to come in and help their kids. It's been very rewarding for us. Um, the partnership we have with the school district has been wonderful. We have had several trainings by Karen Myers. Most of you probably know her if you're involved at all with teaching and learning. Marie Verhar has been a wonderful assistant. She's, she's been really great to work with and we enjoy working with her again in the future. So we thank you all for this opportunity and we hope to have many more years ahead of us helping kids to, to get their reading up. Thank you.
And then you can go ahead and go into the kitchen.
Before you, before you come up, I know the value of this program. I've seen it when I've worked out with, with kids in the district. And, um, not just the reading part, and I know you have one volunteer that's been up at, um, Macarver for years, Pop's been up there. As he said, I get more out of it than I think that the kids do. And I think it, not only is it a reading program, but for a large number of our kids, the readers become mentors also. And I just want to say thank you from my heart for what, what Read to Me does in our schools. Thank you.
Come up, we have a little thing for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A token of our appreciation.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks so much. No problem. I'm seeing you're trying to pick your.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let me show you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's right, you're in good hands there.
All right. Uh, before we move on, um, I was remiss, we have the two empty chairs at the end of the desk filled and we're happy to have that. And we have student board members, they're non-voting members, but they bring a student perspective to the board that oftentimes is helpful to us in making decisions. I think of one in particular when we decided to, as a board, to pay for all the tests that we give. And our two board members, one of them had tears and said, now I will get my IB diploma. And the other one said, now I can take my AP exams. And those aren't the kinds of things that we get if we don't have board members. So I want to welcome back Chelsea Olson from Stadium. Chelsea was with us last year. And Elena, how do you mention it?
Schmuck.
Elena Schmuck from Wilson. And we're happy to have both of them welcome and we look forward to having you be a part of, of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Thank you for taking the time. I know this takes time out of, are both of you seniors this year?
Mm-hmm.
I know it takes busy time for you. And thank you for, for doing this. We really appreciate it. All right, moving on. Item six, members of board, members of public wishing to address the board. Do we have anyone, Mrs. Centorno?
We have two, yes. Two speakers.
All right. Board members encourage public participation. Your input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. Uh, we would ask that your remarks, uh, be civil and appropriate to the topic that you are discussing. I like to think of when people watch us on TV, we are the largest classroom in the school district and hopefully we model behavior we would like to see in our kids. Thank you. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You will have three minutes to share your comments. We have a monitor over there. At the end, uh, when you have one minute left, it will ding. And then when you have no minutes left, it will ding again. And we would ask you to conclude your remarks then. Thank you.
First speaker is, uh, Allison Powell, speaking for Next Move Internships. And, um, Allison will be followed by Leilani Espino, also speaking for Next Move Internships.
Hi, my name's Allison Powell. I am the youth program manager at the Rescue Mission. And I work with all of our children that come to live in our family shelter and our transitional housing here in Tacoma. Uh, I know some of you have visited before, so, um, nice to see your faces. Uh, I'm here not representing the Rescue Missions exactly, um, or exclusively. I'm here to talk about our experience with Next Move Internships. Um, Leilani's going to come speak. She's been one of our students. And, uh, and so at the Rescue Mission, we work with students by providing neat resources when they move in, getting them everything they need to be prepared to go to school and get them into school as quickly as possible. Um, and then we also have our own after-school program onsite that we work with students, partly social, emotional, uh, skill building and also some homework help programming. And so, uh, as the Next Move host site, we work with high school students as interns and it's been an amazing experience. Um, and so we want to thank the board and all you do to continue to expand that program. Um, I'm blown away by how capable our student interns have been. Um, we've had three high school students in the last year and they are the ones actually giving these resources to our children, um, coming to our programs and working one-on-one with students. And we have about a hundred children on any given day living on our campuses. And so we can't do this work just with our staff. We need the community. So, um, yeah, I just want to say thank you and, uh, just tell you, I've been, yeah, blown away by the experience. I'm so thankful for it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Allison. We appreciate your comments and, uh, appreciate your help on the CTE committee too. Thank you.
I am Leilani Espino, a senior at Mount Tahoma High School. I am currently interning through the Next Move Department at the Tacoma Rescue Mission. After high school, I plan on studying psychology and thanks to the Next Move Department, I have confirmed that the career I plan on taking is the right fit for me. I have always had a passion for helping others, um, specifically those in greater need. And through the Next Move, I was able to incorporate the skills that I already have with the skills I will need to become a psychologist, um, to find the right placement for me. Interning has helped me develop skills and abilities that I will need for, um, the future as, as an adult, such as multitasking. Um, work, I work and I have school and my internship in ASB, personal life. And, um, I'm learning to manage everything and balancing each thing. And so I ha, I also have to prioritize and be punctual. I also, um, am putting into practice my professionalism. I have to go through a series of interviews to get, um, my intern, internship. And so I know that in my future, I will have to go through an interview. And, and so having this practice is going to help me be more confident in my future. And also, um, dressing professionally for my internship, having the correct attire for each activity is important. Um, specifically in my internship, I've gained problem-solving skills. Sometimes situations arise with children and I have to think fast and act fast. And so, um, problem solving is a huge skill that I'm gaining through my internship. Also, communication. Um, I'm learning to make my point come across in a professional manner when speaking to adults versus when I'm speaking to children. Overall, interning has been amazing, an amazing experience, and I hope that for generations to come, um, my peers take full advantage of the, these opportunities to evolve their skills and while also giving back to their community. So, thank you, um, to the school board, um, as Allison said, for expanding the opportunity. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Leilani. Yeah, no, it's, no, it's still not. Excuse me, we're having technical difficulties up here. We're going to go old school with paper in a minute. Doesn't want to come.
Should I start with my superintendent's report?
Yes, please, superintendent.
Um, I just have a short, uh, superintendent's report. I wanted to report that today the, uh, leadership team went to the STAR Center. Um, my cabinet has really committed to doing some, uh, in-depth professional development and we've been meeting on a regular, you know, on a frequent basis, uh, four or five times a year. And this morning, um, we spent, um, a very productive day and I just thought it's really , uh, important that the public know the kind of work that we're doing. We started with, uh, a report from our, um, assessment and enrollment and, uh, data coordinator, S J. And she came and really took us through the dashboard. So we had an opportunity to see all the things that we can see from a district perspective to look at, um, how our students are doing, how we can look at, uh, the success of each high school. It was fascinating. And she did a good job. She wouldn't let us touch the computer while she was talking. She used really good old-school techniques. And because of that, S J, I tried it, I can get on the site on my own and get there and look at the data. So we are so much more positioned now to really, uh, have conversations at the cabinet table about where our students are and what schools need support. We've paired that with, um, regular school visits. So, um, this, one, another part of our agenda today, we, um, visited a couple of weeks ago, uh, Gray, Arlington, I'm going to forget the rest, Franklin and, and Oakland. And talked to the principals, uh, visited, watched the teachers. So today, we really had an overview of what we'd learned and what we'd looked at. So we look forward to continuing those kinds of intense visits throughout the year. And then finally, we had three principals come and speak to us from their schools. And there, uh, you know, we have, uh, implemented iReady. We've had great feedback from iReady about what's going on with teachers and how they can use an assessment, an immediate assessment to, uh, really assess their students. And so, uh, Julia from Edison, the principal of Edison, and Kevin Kinnear from, um, Mount Tahoma, and Billy Harris from Giadroni, all came and talked about how they're using iReady in their schools and what their teachers are doing. So we have a better understanding of how those three schools and a real, um, significant understanding of what they're doing. And they talked about their challenges and, um, you know, what they're doing with reluctant teachers. I mean, it was a very full discussion. So, um, I don't know if we look smarter, but we all are. And so, um, I just want the school board and the public to know, um, how seriously we're taking this, uh, our need to have, uh, complete professional development. Feng Yi, I'm sorry, didn't mention Feng Yi, came and talked to us about the iReady booklet and what's going on and what it looks like. And so, um, I know we are better equipped to support schools today than we were yesterday. So, just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Superintendent Centorno. I, I think for those of us who are here, um, we know that that work is going on. It's been obviously going on with Fidelity. You don't get where we are and we know we can always get better. But I think the public really needs to know that all the administrators that you see just don't push paper. They, uh, they're there to help us and analyze and figure out, as you said, where, where our resources need to go. It was one of the things when I was at Cube, when we were, all three, the three of us were back at Cube, that someone said to me later, how do you, how do you decide where your money goes for your kids? Uh, in some districts, that's a problem. I said, well, we have, uh, the data and the evidence that tells us the schools that need extra intervention, extra help. Uh, and I said, I think that has been, um, the main thing that I've seen, uh, coming on the board, that we truly believe in evidence and we, uh, we are evidence-driven, data-based, and we, we walk that talk. And I think what you did today in my, from what you're saying, certainly reinforced that and moved it forward. And, and thank you all for the incredible work that you do do. Sometimes you, all you do is hear what not working, not what is. And I let you know that I, I think every one of us up here knows what's working. Okay, consent agenda. Chair would entertain a motion.
I move, uh, adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
Are there any questions or, pardon me, or questions or comments of the board on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent agenda is adopted. Moving on, policy matters. Item nine one, second reading policy thirty-five fifteen, student incentive. Kristen, I think, are you doing this in the next?
Yeah, I'll be active.
Whoops.
Did that mean? It wasn't touching. Is it working?
No.
The chief financial officer recommends that the board of directors adopt policy three-five-one-five, the student incentive policy.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions of the board? I think we had it explained. Oh.
Were there any, were there any changes to it since the first reading? Okay.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, uh, policy is adopted. For oh, quarterly financial report. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at www.tacomaschools.org/financialreports. Item twelve, curriculum instruction. Are there any issues from curriculum instruction?
No.
All right. Business matters. Seeing none, other business. Item thirteen, thirteen one, ratification of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand twenty-one col, collective bargaining agreement between Tacoma School District Number Ten and the membership of the International Union of Operating Engineers Local Two Eighty-Six, uh, security. Uh, Mrs., Noel, Dr. Nolan.
The Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources recommends that the board of directors ratify the collective bargaining agreement between Tacoma School District Number Ten and the membership of the International Union of Operating Engineers Local Two Eighty-Six, security.
Move approval.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Are there, uh, questions or comments by the board of Dr. Nolan? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, ratifications of adoption, signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, motion is carried for, oh, report to the board. Fourteen one, benchmark report. Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, uh, Marie Verhar and team.
I'm the team.
Just once again, as the team's transitioning up, I just want to remind those folks at home, uh, that our reports are available online. They go under the monitoring reports of the strategic plan. And additionally, uh, we present data that is focused in on the priority benchmarks. And then each report has an appendix that has a more complete picture of some of the data breakdowns as well as additional grade levels for folks. And within that, the website also has a place for suggestions and questions if folks would like to see different actions. And I think we're ready.
We're ready.
Thank you, team.
Yes. Good evening, President Viall, members of the board, our student reps, great to have you, Superintendent Centorno and Deputy Superintendent Garcia. Tonight, Assistant Superintendent Pace, Ms. Pace and I are here to present to you, uh, two of the, the strategic goals. Both early learning and academic excellence merged into one report as we talk tonight about our state assessment, the Smarter Balanced Assessment. This evening, we will be presenting data for grades three, five and eight. The remaining grades can be found, all of the data can be found in your appendix as they can also be found on our stu, on our website under our benchmark data. It's good if you turn it on. So first, we were going to look at our third grade English Language Arts data. And as we can see by this slide, we have shown an improvement of approximately five percent in our third grade students who have taken this assessment for the second ti, for the, this is the second year, our students have taken the Smarter Balanced. You'll remember, last year was the first inaugural year of Smarter Balanced and actually two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen was the second year. So we can see that our third graders made approximately five percent gain from the third graders who took the assessment the year before, remembering that our district goal for two thousand eighteen is fifty-nine percent. When we look at our subgroup data, we can see that most subgroups for third grade English Language Arts showed some improvement with the exception of two of our subgroups, Native American and Pacific Islander students. We recognize that with all grade levels, there is still considerable progress to make for all students. For our fifth graders, we see that the, this percentages remained about the same. So the data was fairly flat. There were no significant changes. As we look at our district goal for two thousand eighteen for fifth grade, sixty-five percent, we see that we have about fifteen percent gains to make over the next two years. Looking at subgroup data for English Language Arts for fifth grade, we can see that we have a significant gap between our white and Asian students and the rest of our subgroups in fifth grade ELA. Many sub, subgroups show no significant increase while some in fifth grade show a decrease in the percentage of students meeting standard for fifth grade English Language Arts. Want to call out a positive change in one of our subgroups, the Native American subgroup, made a positive fourteen percent gain. So there are places of excellence and, and improvement, but we do know that in this second year, the data is still showing us that with our subgroup data specifically, we have much work and concentration to do to make certain that our students are prepared. Moving on to the eighth grade data, sometimes for those folks watching at home, these slides may look the same, but you can see right under the Smarter Balanced ELA title, it shows you the grade level. So this is eighth grade, Smarter Balanced ELA. And this goal for eighth grade is sixty-two percent by two thousand eighteen. We can see that progress was made for eighth grade with fifty-two percent of our students meeting standards, so approximately a seven percent increase from two thousand fifteen. Remembering, these are two different groups of students. So comparing last year's seventh grader, excuse me, eighth graders to this year's eighth graders, they're not the same students, they're two different groups of students. Again, continued progress is needed in this area as well to meet our district goal of two thou, of sixty-two percent in two thousand eighteen. As we look at the subgroup data for ELA, we can see, um, as we, again, a significant increase was made by our Native American students with twenty-one percent gain. And looking back at all three grade levels and thinking about, um, where we're at, with exception of third grade, the Asian subgroup actually met or exceeded the district standard or the district goals. Students, as you will see in a few moments when we share with you math, the math data, our students made more growth in two thousand sixteen in ELA than they did in mathematics. So as I went through the slides, I primarily shared with you all of our key findings, calling out just a couple more in addition. In all subgroups for ELA, we showed positive gains for our free and reduced lunch category subgroup. All three grade levels showed positive improvement. Several groups showed greater than five percent gain in third and eighth grade with the exception of fifth grade. Again, we recognize that a majority of our subgroups are significantly below the district So what are some of our next steps based on this data and the year's previous data? As we continue to improve our assessment system, you heard a little bit about that tonight from Superintendent Centorno, teachers will have more immediate data to make adjustments in instruction and provide meaningful intervention based on that data. And then be able to determine, is that intervention working or is it not working? And if it's not working, then let's do something else quickly. The Student Services Department, in collaboration with the teachers and principals and Teaching and Learning Department, are developing an intervention framework, a guide, if you will, to help our teachers to better understand what does intervention look like for students? What does it mean to intervene? What does that, what are some of the most effective ways? Our teachers are very skilled at this, but sometimes there's a student that they just maybe are looking for another way to meet the students' needs. So this intervention framework will serve as a tool for teachers to use, um, when they look at the data and they're determining what are next steps for our students. We are reevaluating the standards in both math and ELA, as I've mentioned before, on the elementary. the elementary report card to ensure that they, they truly align to the state assessment. Yes, they are state standards on the report card, but we want to make sure that those standards that are highlighted on the elementary report card for math and ELA are the priorities. They are the most essential, and then the supporting standards support those. So we'll be doing, um, some work with teachers to evaluate those this year. Schools are providing extended learning opportunities, so outside of the core ELA block, and sometimes perhaps outside of the school day, after school, to offer additional learning opportunities for students needing additional support. Principals are working with their level directors. They're conducting walkthroughs and having opportunities to calibrate to ensure that teachers are providing the highest quality or what we call the best first instruction. Again, I've mentioned the K five literacy framework that's being implemented this year. It's exciting to be in buildings and seeing the differentiation occurring, the small group work. As Superintendent Santorno said this morning, we got to hear from one of our principals showing us specifically how teachers are using those leveled books that you so graciously approved last year for us to purchase and put in classrooms, how they're using those books to help students set goals based on the iReady data, and how those students then are owning some of that learning and using these, these sets of six books to teach small groups based on the data that they're learning from both iReady and from the developmental reading assessment, which is the D R A, but also classroom-based assessments that our teachers, who are so skilled at assessing kids, are also using those, their own assessments. So we know that it's not one assessment tool or measurement that's going to determine that there are many different measurement tools, and teachers are using all of those. And we're continuing to support them with that through professional learning. And finally, the work that we've done over the last two years around the high yield strategies or those, those strategies that leverage the most learning for our students, that give us the greatest net gain, we're continuing to develop opportunities for teachers to learn together about what ways to best use those strategies in the classrooms. We are now moving on to math.
We have a little bit different picture of math than we have, uh, with ELA. So first, we're going to take a look at the data and, uh, see what that data looks like. We'll start with the third grade, and, um, we can see in the third grade, well, look at the third grade. We've got it there. We've got it there, okay. Um, we can see that there's just a little bit of a gain in two thousand sixteen, uh, in level three and four. Um, in, in two thousand sixteen, um, the same percentage of students are in level two as they are in, uh, in two thousand fifteen. And however, in two thousand sixteen, fewer students in level one plus more students took the test, where we can see it's, there's some small gains there, as you see the ripple effect, uh, that goes across in two thousand sixteen. In the subgroup area, um, the district goal in subgroups is, uh, close to being met by our white and Asian students, even though Asian went down by four percent. Growth is shown in our multi Hispanic and special ed subgroups. There is no change seen in our black, male, female, and E L L groups, and less growth is seen in our Native American and Pacific Islander. And just a reminder that our, our district goal for third grade is sixty-three percent. In the fifth grade, uh, two thousand sixteen is, is down, uh, two percentage points from two thousand fifteen. And if you look at level one, proportionally more students are at level one in fifth grade for both years. And again, we dropped to two percentage points, uh, in two thousand sixteen, in our fifth grade. And our, uh, district goal is fifty-nine percent. So we have a ways to go there. Subgroups, uh, you can see that our white and Asian students have exceeded or nearly met the goal, uh, two thousand eighteen district goal. And all subgroups, with the exception of Asian, E L L, and Pacific Islander decreased in number of students meeting standard. Eighth grade, uh, no, uh, change in overall percentage meeting standard in two thousand sixteen and two thousand fifteen. However, if you take a closer look, you can see that, um, in two thousand sixteen, there were more in, in level four, uh, which means that they were exceeding standard, and less in level three. More students meeting standard at a higher level, uh, like I said earlier, in, uh, showing in two thousand sixteen that, that more students are, um, um, exceeding, uh, um, standard, they're above standard in level four. Also, in two thousand sixteen, uh, there is less students in level one and more in level two, which again shows there's progress moving forward, um, in the direction of meeting standard. So we're, you know, analyzing the, the specifics here and trying to see where are our, our small successes and how we can, how can we build upon those. In our subgroup areas, uh, the Asian, uh, subgroup have met the two thousand eighteen goal of fifty-six percent. Uh, there is an increase for white, Asian, multi, and E L L, decrease in black, Native American, and Hispanic, and no change for Pacific Islander, male, female, and, and special education. Our key findings, uh, I pretty much explained a lot of that along the way. Uh, but if you look at E L L in fifth and eighth grade, they did make, uh, growth in those two grade levels. Similar amount of increases needed in all grade levels, uh, approximately fifteen to nineteen percent to meet our district goals. And, uh, with the exception of grade three, the Asian subgroups met or exceeded the district goals. Our next steps in, in math, um, as we have spoken about the use of data, as Superintendent Santorno mentioned earlier, as Marie Verhar has also mentioned, teachers are using more data, um, with the approval of our data days that you, that you approved. Um, the principals are, and teachers are, are looking at data more closely and making more informed decisions regarding curriculum planning, differentiation, and intervention. As in ELA, we are providing better tools for teachers to use in assessing student academic achievement and in making more informed decisions regarding the individual needs of our students. I also wanted to mention the Whole Child Initiative, which is also providing additional training for teachers and administrators around the social, emotional needs of our students, because we know that when those needs are not met, it is much more difficult to address the academic needs of our students. As, uh, Superintendent Verhar mentioned earlier, there is specific administrative training that we are doing with our principals, uh, around leading this work as the lead, uh, instructional leader in their buildings. Uh, and professional development is being provided through our level directors, along with partnership with Teaching and Learning. We know that we have some ground to cover, um, but we also do have a number of district initiatives in place to aid this work. So that concludes our presentation, and we're open for questions.
Thank you. Uh, do you want to start with Director Cobb?
Yeah, I just have, um, a couple. With regard to math and extended learning, and I'm trying to think back to our presentation a couple board meetings ago about summer learning opportunities, what are some of our extended learning or summer learning opportunities that are focused on math? I can remember clearly thinking about reading camp and some of the others that are focused on reading, but what are, you know, extended learning and summer learning opportunities related to math? And the elementary?
It's definitely an area of growth. We, we, it's more of an integrated approach through some of our explore program and, uh, the STEM activities. Um, but there is a nod the same, uh, as in the elementary school, we have reading camps.
Yeah.
And, uh, so it's an area of growth for us.
I think that's it for me.
Great.
Thank you.
So, um, Director Winskill?
Yeah, I have a question about, uh, so the fifth grade, which is not done really well, um, do, what do we give in the fourth grade as a test? Are we giving this test in every grade, but are we just reporting on like three, five, and eight?
Yes, and that fourth grade data is in your appendix as well.
Okay, so I just was wondering if this was new to those students, because they hadn't been reported on last year, but...
No, so the, the smarter balance, uh, is assessed at the grades three through eight and in the high school.
Mm-hmm. Well, I thought so, but I...
You bet.
Um, I have a, what is, there's a test that's given nationally or internationally. I'm trying to think of the initials of that.
NAEP?
Yes, that, that's right. Do we give that in this district?
Yes, we give it, but the NAEP is administered, uh, through a random sampling by the, the Department of Education. So we don't get, it's not given to all kids. They come in and they take a dipstick, if you will, by selecting certain schools and certain grade levels.
Okay, so if we're giving it, are we getting different data on math with that test than we're getting on the smarter balance?
I would have to go back and look at the correlation between, uh, the standardized tests that the state, it's literally, uh, grade level by school comparison, so we can, we can look into that.
Yeah, well, I'd just like to look at that, because I, I've looked at some of that smarter balance stuff, and, you know, frankly, I wouldn't have been good at that, um, when I was young. I, I find it really a confusing test, and it's very hard to actually discern what kind of answers they even want. So I can see how some of the students would be a little mixed up. So I'd really like to look at the NAEP, which I think is more traditional. And, um, it'd just be interesting to see those two comparisons.
So to compare, Director Winskill, kind of the correlation between our NAEP and smarter balance scores?
Well, not, uh, just, um, if we did well in the NAEP, I would like that better. I would be more impressed than doing well in the smarter balance. Let's just put it that way.
So look at the NAEP proficiency and what's going on with those.
Yeah. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Director Roschka.
I don't have any comments. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of thoughts. I mean, number one, I, I think that from what I, I, I understand, uh, doing some of my school visits, the screener, at least at the elementary school is, they're really happy with the iReady. I know it's a start for us, that they feel it can make a difference in moving these scores forward, because now you know what the kid doesn't know at the start of school and, and will know. And I, I think I've gotten positive feedback both from the middle school people and from, uh, elementary. Um, I guess, uh, one of the things I think also is, um, the fact that we're now using what I call multi variant tools will help us. It may be that some kids will, um, assess better with a certain tool than they do with another tool, and I think that obviously is part of what we've asked you to do on differentiated instruction. Uh, this is just one, um, one, you know, really, I think, thing that I really have seen a difference over the last four years or five years, came here, that staff didn't have ready proposed solutions to address problems than we do now. And I think, when I see that, here's what we're going to do, and here's what we're going to get after, and we're going to see if it works, and not just sit there and thinking, now, what do we need to do? And I want to commend you for that. And if they don't work, then we try something else. Just a kind of a food for thought, I was sitting here, you know, kind of thinking about elementary versus middle school versus high school for, for math. And I know that in elementary, we expect our teachers to be jack of all trades and probably masters of none. And a lot of our elementary school teachers, uh, I know when I was how, I told them, you have trouble when you're asking me how to teach a math class, help you teach a math class, but, uh, that, most of them, um, their training has been in language arts or K five and has not been in math. And I'm wondering if we've ever looked at the, at the correlations between elementary scores and those teachers, particularly at the high school and, and middle school level that have endorsements in math. As to, is that a, something that maybe we need to look at? I'm just throwing this out for thought, and I'm sorry if I'm doing this, but maybe we need to look at having a core math teacher or, uh, within elementary who helps other teachers beyond the coach. It's just an idea. I saw that when we came with expressions out there, and I, you know, fortunate just because of my academic training to have had a lot of math. And for a lot of people, it was like, Debbie, you're kind of saying the same thing, I think, about looking at how, do, even for the teachers. And we didn't, we're doing better professional development, I mean, hundred and fifty times better than we did. But maybe it's a food for thought as we try to be a little more, you know, try to look at, at focusing on the elementary, are, are teachers in, you know, really, really demonstrating a mastery in helping them get there and how to teach that beginning math as you start in, you know, even in first grade, the kids are learning how to do algebraic equations, you know, setting them up and so on. That's the only question, you know, comment I have, and I, I, I have confidence that we're going to move that needle. Another question I, I, just a comment too, I'm, you know, being a numbers junkie, I always like to know what the N is, and I saw it for two thousand fifteen, and I think, Mrs. Pace, you said more kids took the test in sixteen? And I know that's, every time we have to compare these darn things, it's apples and oranges, you know, apples to oranges. If we could have a, you know, next time, maybe how many took it in sixteen versus fifteen, and that can skew your, you know, skew your numbers and your results, so...
So that's predominantly at the high school level.
Correct, I know that, yeah.
Just for those that are watching at home.
Okay.
So our, and that's, uh, the high schoolers, as they may be able to explain better than I am, are not required at certain grade levels to take the exam yet.
Yeah.
We've seen...
You escaped.
And, and we get, you know, we are getting, um, pressure from the State Department to increase the N, the number, you know, we, last year, we went through that first phase of a, of kind of an opt-out, you know, with parents choosing to opt their students out, and it does, it does hurt us, because those are averaged in as zero. So, you know, one of the things we had to submit to the state this year was a plan for, you know, our plan for increasing the N, which is not easy to do, because if it's a philosophical difference from parents saying, no, we don't believe in these standardized tests, so we're not going to put our kids, you know, we're not going to let our students take them, then, um, you know, we, we need to increase our work of marketing and our campaign to let them know how important it is for us to get that data.
What, what does it look like with just the kids that, uh, that did take the test with, with the zeros pulled out?
I don't even know. I don't know if we've gotten that data.
Can we get that data? I'm just curious, because if things are averaged in as a zero, that obviously skews it, but daylight's out of our numbers. Finji, do you know?
I just got the nod from S J back there. She said they, they would work on it, so...
Okay, I mean, just so that, you know, we can get a, a good idea of the kids that are taking the test, how well they are doing versus...
That'd be a good idea.
Uh, those, you know, if you pull a whole bunch of zeros out, I mean, you can get, you know, if you have an equal number of kids scoring a hundred and you have an equal number of zeros, it comes out at fifty. And so I, that's what I'm looking at. I want to, because I think this is not a clear picture, uh, in many ways of, of how we're doing. So if we could do that.
Could I, um, ask something else?
I'm sorry.
Well, it was the regional meeting. We discussed, um, you know, the ninety-five percent, um, numbers that they want to take the test. And I know there's, uh, sort of philosophical difference with people on that committee in the state, but if we, we're able to take the SAT and the P S A T and use those as a measure of passage, even though they don't totally correlate with, uh, smarter balance, we, everybody takes that test in our district, and that would, uh, be a long ways for that, number one.
I agree, and I would advocate that, that what's unique about this is when you think about that compared to high school graduations. Um, so their, students have to demonstrate the mastery. Now, these results only report on a single day when they took it. And so we have students that are able to demonstrate mastery in an AP exam, in an SAT, uh, exam, as ACT exam, other standardized ways that will allow them to demonstrate that count for graduation, but are not factored into our reports. And so that's another potential solution there. Uh, if we truly believe in multiple measures as a state, um, then why not allow a student in a school to look at that whole portfolio of exams and say, yeah, we weren't did it on this day, because maybe I just had a really bad day. Um, but I did do it on the same unbiased, well, I won't use the word unbiased, because all the exams have a little bit of bias to...
They all do.
Non-district exam.
So I hope we're representing that to the OSPI at those meetings, that, uh, point of view. But I, I, there's one other thing I'd like to say. So I have two, a granddaughter in the second, uh, first grade and a grandson in the fourth grade who are excelling in math, and their teachers are giving them extra work, which I appreciate. And I think that, you know, I haven't heard that...
Higher level work.
Yes, and that they're pulling them out, saying, we're going to give you more complicated work because you are doing well. So that's great, I think, in our district. I think a lot of parents appreciate that ability.
Yes.
It's important to me that, um, our public and, um, those people at home, those here, know that, you know, we, we go through this data and we report it and we let you know. And I sometimes think that you don't hear the urgency in our voice, and I just want to make sure that people know that, that we, we realize this is an urgent issue and that we are continuing to work. Um, you know, the, the gap is not, is unacceptable, and the performance of our kids of color versus, um, you know, our, uh, other students and our, um, the, you know, the lack of increased, um, achievement of, are not, our students that are not of color are a concern to us. Um, it's interesting, because I spent a lot of time talking to principals last year, and so many of them thought, this is the year. We're going, you know, we're going to make a difference. and so many of them thought, this is the year, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna make a difference. And, you know, they were very disappointed when they didn't see those gains. So I just want the public to understand that we are, that we really are, the, the work you heard me talk about in the superintendent's report, these principals coming in and giving detailed reports of what they're doing with their teachers and what it looks like and how they're looking at data. Yesterday, was it yesterday, Monday? Monday was a data day. So we, the board has allowed us four full days where we just look at data for our students and say, you know, what does this child need to move forward to the next place? And, you know, looking at strategies that can help students. I do think, and Fin, Fin, you talked about it today, is that we're seeing a strong correlation between the I-ready scores and the Smarter Balance assessment. Because you really can't do a good job of saying, okay, this is exactly what Carla needs, until you have it demonstrated, you know, in another way. And it's not a test that you had to build and hope it's compatible and hope it's valid. So it's, it's important to me that our public knows that we're not sitting back saying, oh, well, let's try again. No, we have been, you know, Director Viall talked about it. We have not been complacent with this work. I have seen incredible work with staff development from curriculum instruction. Our coaches are going into teachers' classrooms and watching teachers that have been successful. We have schools that are beating the odds, that are getting good results from students of color that were going into their classrooms and finding out. We talked today about a system of videotaping and having teachers come in and watch those teachers that are being successful to see what they're doing and having an opportunity for them to talk and say, you know, for the question, the teachers that come and observe to say, how did you do that? Or why did you do that? Or what's that, you know, what is that about? So we are not doing business as usual. We are working significantly on this work. This gap and the achievement of our students is a part of my personal goal. And so I can't consider myself successful at all until we take care of this issue.
And I thank you, Mrs. Santoro, and I don't think none of us sitting up here are complacent. That's one of the things that we will evaluate the superintendent on the end of the year. These are goals that, and the progress that we have made in, in the district has been phenomenal. But we all know we have more to do, like Robert Frost poem, and miles and miles to go. And we're committed to getting there, no matter what it takes.
And I don't want to dismiss, it is important to me, what Josh, Dr. Garcia said about, it's not the sole assessment, you know, that we have to look at more than that.
Chelsea.
Yeah, so I had a question also about the students who are doing well, if their teachers are being assessed. And I understand through the process of videotaping and having other teachers re, watch these teachers. Because I feel, for me personally, math has always been a challenge. And I don't know if it was because I was younger, I didn't get the proper education or if it's just something that my brain just doesn't, you know, click. But yeah, I think that's very important, especially at a young age, that kids do understand math because it's a very vital skill that you need when you grow. But also with the Smarter Balance, I know at Stadium, seniors, seniors weren't required to take it, so nobody did take it who was a senior. But I do believe if you guys want scores that are more representing the students, I feel like you should have it in an SAT-type setting where it is very important, very vital to the kids' career in school. Because I know in SAT, there was no way nobody wasn't gonna be there. Like, I saw my gym and it was crowded. So I think if you guys, if we want to see scores showing all types of students and ethnicities, we should definitely do it in an SAT-type setting where it's very important, or maybe even graduation requirement.
So it is now becoming a graduation requirement for the, the younger students? So you guys can help by modeling the way and say, hey, this will come. And, and the reason why the seniors didn't have to take it is because they already had to meet a different graduation requirement. And so what the state did for those that are at home, that said, if you hadn't met the other one, the previous one, the MSP, you can use this, or excuse me, the HISP at that level. You can use this as another alternative. And so that's where we got some kids that were taking it and stuff, but great suggestions.
Elena, do you have anything you want to add?
I do. So I was looking at the data between, in the appendix for the math scores. And I noticed that in the sixth and seventh grade, I'm sorry, in the sixth grade, they did improve and then in the seventh grade, they did decrease. And then in the eighth grade, they showed a plateau. So I just found that it was interesting that they were kind of like growing exponentially and then falling. And it brought me back to like an experience that I had earlier in the week where I'm taking AP Calculus this year. And it's been really hard for me to find extra help outside of class. So like, the first problem is identifying that I need help. And so those students that do need to improve in their math scores, that they're not being reflected in this test or the way that they're being assessed, yes, it might have been like a poor day to be tested or so forth. But also I think that within the district, I feel that maybe kids aren't feeling like they have somewhere to go, like the extra resources that we were talking about earlier, or like an additional camp where they can seek that help in a certain subject. Because for me, I'm finding that I'm gonna have to go out and get my own tutoring for this subject just because I don't feel like I had the proper knowledge beforehand coming into it. So I have to backtrack a little bit, but.
Thank you, good comments. We appreciate them.
One last thing, and I, I know that, I know that everybody understands that. But, you know, we get criticism from, from folks that say, you're just going for the scores. And so we tend to classify, you know, our efforts as increasing the scores, but we're not talking about just increasing scores. We want you smarter today than you were yesterday and we want you to know, you know, really get the educational concepts. So the test is but a reflection of, you know, of your, of your knowledge. And we could, you can raise scores by going out. I mean, lots of districts in California have given kids raisins before the test and, you know, other artificial methods to raise scores. We're not about raising scores. We're about raising the, the achievement of our students to make sure that they, you know, that they can apply those concepts to the next level. So thank you, Elena. That was a good comment.
Yeah, and I, I think that's the crux of the whole thing. The test score should reflect the fact that we've taught you to critically think and problem solve and have given you those skills, not just say, okay, this is what's gonna be on the Smarter Balance test, this is what's gonna be on the SAT. If we give you a strong foundation of problem-solving skills in the areas in which these tests measure, then, then our kids should do well and you should be able to do well on anything, AP and SAT and S-Back and lord knows what's gonna come after this. But that's the whole point of it. And I think that, from my standpoint, that's what has been lost when we went to these standardized tests. That, yeah, they're standardized, but you should all be able to have the knowledge to sit down and the skills to do it. I have a suggestion. Go over and look on the, over to UPS and look on their board. That's a good place to find someone for a tutor for, for AP Calculus and they're usually pretty cheap. Okay, and there's some kids that sent on here that are probably gonna help you.
We'll, we'll do an analysis as well to make sure that our principals are communicating what support is available for you and Wilson as well across the schools.
Andre, did you have one more comment?
Oh, I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to say, in the spirit of the conversation we're having about multiple measures, I appreciate that. And I appreciate our ambitious goals and us continue to work toward them. But when I look at these, the piece that I really want to see is that Level 1 shrink.
Yeah.
The Level 2 and all that, and the 3s. And even I know, as a parent, looking at the report card or this assessment report that comes and it's nice to see, like, if your child would have taken this on another day, it's likely that their score might have ranged from here to here. So if you read that report and you're able to kind of process through it, it gives you that sense that it's one day and not any other day, I might have been here or here. But I just think that it'll be great to keep watching this Level 1 shrink as all the work is happening on, in the classrooms and in the summer. And just to continue to see that go.
Significant. The other thing is the portfolio approach that we talked about with the TCC board the other day about looking at grades being indicators and their screener they have at the community college level. You may take it on a day when you've got a bad cold and you feel not, not good and you may have As in AP Calculus and you get put in a remedial class. And about beginning to look at, you know, the quality of the work on a continuum rather than just one specific thing. And colleges are now coming back to that too, to look at that. So I think, you know, there's lots of things that we have to do and can do. And I, what I really appreciate is that the attitude of this board in this district is that we'll just go fix it. And we asked the staff to do that and they do it. Okay.
President Viall, one last comment. I was just giving an update. OSPI and the Department of Ed did not release the NAEP scores, so we're unable to do a correlation between SVA and the NAEP yet. So they may do that in the future, but at this point, we, so, would not be able to provide that.
The one last comment is to remember, Elena, these are different groups of kids each year. So it's not the same sixth graders that are the seventh, you know what, yeah, they move, they move through that. So that sometimes is hard that people won't say, well, what happened last year's fourth graders aced this? Well, they're a different group of kids then, but they all should be able to. I'm just saying, it's hard to make the kind of comparisons that you don't like.
Just one last comment for our, our public watching at home. It is quite confusing. And if you might have a seventh grade student, you might be saying, so what are the requirements for my student when they get to, to high school? So we have put this chart in the appendix, which will be available on our website tomorrow. It's right under the benchmark data. There's a, it'll say monitoring report. This is accessible to our public. And this is also on our assessment webpage. But this is a nice chart that Dr. Hung and her department put together to help us really see how have the graduation requirements changed over the years and then what's coming. So I just wanted to draw attention to that, which is in the appendix.
Thank you. Thank you very much. As always, very informative and we're looking forward to pushing that needle. Thank you. Great. Okay, board reports and comments, and I'm gonna start with our world traveler, Vice President Ashka.
Do you want to start with me or end with me?
Well, we start with you and everybody else will be.
Okay.
Okay, remember now we have an executive session.
Oh, do we?
Yes, we do.
Okay, awesome. Well, I'm gonna try and be brief today. And so I got to go to China with the Lincoln AIBs. Ninety-seven students, two citizens, Mr. Ron Chao, Principal Erwin, Vice Principals Ask You and Amen, as well as 10 really awesome teachers. And Andy and Seiki Chan, I think their names are in the Asian mark. Chang, thank you. I know them. I just forgot their last name. And an amazing time was had at all, had by all. Our students are amazing. Our staff and our teachers are amazing. Joining us also were a couple of members of King Five News, two of our own PIOs, and a member of the News Tribune. So hopefully, over the course of the last couple of weeks, you've been inundated with AIBs in China information and you've seen a lot of our students' stories. I'm gonna tell a little bit about it tonight, but really I'm working with some of the Lincoln crew to talk to the adults and staff who are there and what are we taking back from it? And what are the staff taking back from it? On this trip, we were busy from sometimes four in the morning, usually six in the morning, until 10 o'clock at night. And then our media staff was going to their rooms and doing their work and getting things over the internet, which was sometimes nearly impossible. So we took a lot of pictures and it's gonna take some time to unpack all the experiences that we had, if that makes sense. That being said, let me see what I can tell you. I tried to put down some quick notes here, like I tend to do anyway. So I had internet up until the end of Hong Kong, so went to Hong Kong first. We need to, and I have to give a shout out to Ron Chao and his family because they went to great extents to make sure that Hong Kong was funded for our students. And as we were there and you started to realize, the members of his family and the not-for-profits that he engaged throughout Hong Kong to make sure that that was an extraordinary journey for our kids, it was pretty outstanding. So I had internet until I got through Fuzhou. I was in the airport and we had a delay. Because it's China, it said it's a delay because there's a delay. And so we waited and I couldn't get on the internet. In frustration, I deleted my VPN and restarted my phone. Never do that because I could never get down to my VPN and I was off the internet until I got back to the States.
Oh, my goodness.
Which was bizarre, yeah.
Could have been a gift.
You take a walk in, in the middle of Beijing by yourself at night as a, as a woman of my age and go down an alley and you find some neat things and you go, I think I'm lost. I'll just use Google. No, I won't. I'll text somebody and tell them that I say a sign that has some Chinese characters on it. So I found my way back and had my own little adventure there.
Had to go old school again.
When we got to Fuzhou, we were welcomed like, like royalty. There was, we had police escorts throughout our stay in Fuzhou. We went and visited a school. I'm gonna ask Kevin to show a, a short clip on that that you might have already seen, but hopefully you'll enjoy it a second time. And then I'll just have a few more comments and some news until November 10th. So if you'll bear with me, I'd love to see the Fuzhou. I want you to know the greeting has 2,000 students clapping in unison from 18 to 23.
We just arrived in Fuzhou last night, but your city is beautiful, your school is beautiful. But more importantly, the people here are beautiful in your thoughts and your actions. So again, thank you.
Many wouldn't even think of coming to China due to our economic status. But now we are here and we are living the dream. We, as the next generation, are tomorrow's future. I speak for the many of us when I say, we will remember this forever.
They had that bus installed in advance of our arrival to celebrate our presence. Happy I'm here. That's what I have to say.
You see the new culture, you see like new trees. It's like beautiful right there. It's like, a lot of words I can't even explain right now. That's how it's getting out right now.
That's their playground.
You know, I think in life, it's gonna open up my kids' minds to the rest of the world and I think that's the most fun part.
You wanna go play football?
I think the thing that I'm gonna take away is that the world is just so big.
Yeah, I feel like a celebrity kind of.
They close all the roads so we, so we can come there.
Yeah, when we were in the classroom, somebody came up to me and him right here, like shoving a microphone in our face and I was like, whoa, whoa, whoa. I felt like a real celebrity.
Oh, gosh, this is like mind-blowing. I absolutely just feel super blessed right now. It's just, oh, my gosh, and he's such an amazing person. He's so amazing. This is Frank.
I think he's amazing. Yeah, I love, I love, oh, this beautiful lady.
He's amazing. He's amazing.
If she was the opposite, she'd be like, she's in kindergarten.
Post Chou, uh, post Fuzhou, we went to Shandiao where we saw pandas because pandas, and I don't think I have to say much more besides pandas. Throughout all of our, our places that we went, people were extraordinarily generous and kind. I think that when the AIBs got back and there wasn't a rolling marquee at Lincoln that said, welcome the Lincoln delegation, we weren't really sure if we were supposed to be there or not. So I'm always proud of all of our students and to come on all of our staff, but I had an extraordinary opportunity to be closer to them. I have absolute confidence that our AIBs are, were phenomenal ambassadors for our city and for our nation and for Lincoln High School. And that as they grow into adults, they're gonna continue to be so. So my heart is enlarged by the experience and I have tremendous confidence in our future. But that wasn't all. Let's not talk about the day where we started by climbing the Great Wall and, no, there isn't an escalator. And some of our athletes raced to the top and apparently they were doing like burpees on each step, getting to the top.
Oh, my goodness.
I got about 30 steps further than I intended and I was proud of myself for that. I made it back on the bus. On the same day, we did the Forbidden City and Tiananmen Square. And I logged more steps on my Fitbit than I have in my entire life. So that was a great day. Again, I, I could go on for a long time, but as this all came to an end and we had gone to the Education Ministry of the Nation of China, I just want to say that again, when we went to our visit to the Education Ministry of the Nation of China, that was kind of interesting. And that was also wonderful. We were leaving the following day to go on the plane and I was in bus number three, so I heard this last. But we got a little extra something out of gratitude and respect from the Chinese government. And Kevin, can you show that, that clip from the bus?
I'm very happy to see that everyone here is happy and you have had a wonderful trip. If you have a recommendation letter from your principal, and you can through our consulate in San Francisco, we'll be more than to do that. One of the reasons that you are our very dear guests, and we do want to see you here in China. Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Just to reiterate that, in case people didn't catch it, for those 97 students, when they go to college, if they want to study in China for three weeks or two years, and they have a recommendation from Principal Erwin, the Chinese government is going to make sure they're funded.
Woo-hoo.
And I'm going to leave you with that warm thought, and I'm going to ask you, look forward to November 10th, we're all going to have a more detailed report on what we've learned.
Andrea.
No comments.
Hard to follow that, Debbie.
I can't top that either.
Chelsea.
Yeah, we were just talking about, why don't we go to Lincoln?
The wrong school.
I definitely want to say it's amazing what the district is doing, especially in Tacoma. I was an ambassador for New Zealand in my, in my 2nd grade year, so I definitely know what it's like going to different countries, seeing a different side of the world, and it's, I think it's very important, very healthy for students to see what's outside of the United States, but yeah. And I'm also very thankful that I got another year back on the board, so, thank you.
Good, we're glad to have you. Alina, do you have anything?
No comment.
Great. All right, announcement of future board meetings, Thursday, November 10th, 2016, 6:00 PM regular business meeting, and Monday, a different date because of Thanksgiving, November 21st, 2016, 6:00 PM regular business meeting. Item 17, the board will meet an executive session for approximately 15 minutes with legal counsel to continue, I'm sorry, to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause the likelihood of an increased price. No action will be taken in executive session. Board will now adjourn to executive session, and this will end our meeting. Thank you.
I should have mentioned to you that I was at Lincoln at 6:30 this morning.
I know.
Definitely. King Five was there. Is it that, that they're posting, and that they're going to have a posting sometime this year? In November, around Thanksgiving, there's going to be an hour.
Wonderful. Yeah, tell us where.